So let's call this thing to order. Can we rise for the pledge of allegiance? Flag is over there. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the next thing would be approval of agenda.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to mention, since we just pledged the allegiance to the flag, that today is Juneteenth.
Yes.
And that it's a celebration of the final, final end of slavery, although we, as a country, still have a lot of work to do. Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand humans were given their freedom on this day, 1865 or something like that. Okay, thank you.
No, thank you for making that motion, I appreciate it. So approval of agenda. Can I have a motion?
One change, we can drop the pre-K update. Sarah is unfortunately sick, so we'll have to reschedule that.
With that, can I have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Second. Any more discussion? No? No? All right, all those in favor? Seems good, all right, we're good. Very much. The next thing would be public comments, announcements. Ready? No? All right. That's good there. So then no discussion. The next is approval of minutes from 5:20.
Hold on a second.
Yep.
Just for a little public comment and announcement, I just wanted to warn you, Gray, I think your microphone is on, just FYI. I'm getting a little feedback coming from your end.
Oh yeah, thank you.
Really? Okay, I'll mute my microphone.
Okay, so approval of minutes from 5:29:24 and from 6:10:24. We can do those separately?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from 5:29:24.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion? Everybody happy with them? All right, all those in favor? Excellent. All right, and then from 6:10:24.
I'll make that motion as well.
All right. Len? One second. All right. Any discussion about it? We're all good? All right, all those in favor? We're all good over there? Fantastic. Okay, so then we're gonna skip pre-K and we're gonna go to sports update. I think Kim is up there.
Kim, if you're ready, we don't have a pre-K update. Sarah's sick, so we're starting with you tonight.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So just to wrap up on spring and kind of what we're looking forward to for this summer and for the fall season, I did share with everybody kind of what I'll be talking about. We opened registration two weeks ago and so far we have eighty students registered, seven through twelve. And that's with, that's girls soccer, boys soccer, cross-country, cheerleading, golf, and football. And we are going to be offering bass fishing this fall. It's a very short season, but we've had a lot of interest from students at our track. A lot of area schools already do it and it's a huge success. They also let kids who wouldn't normally be eating at teens actually do something that they probably want to do on the weekends for the family. I have some coaching positions that are posted on school spring. Varsity cross-country and varsity traffic field, our coach that was both has, or will be moving back to Delaware, though we're losing him and very sad about it because of really great assets for our program and really helped it grow. Bass fishing coach, we will be looking for a varsity softball coach, and a middle school girls soccer coach at this time. Those are all booked on school spring. Projects that we're working with building the grounds on for the summer, the middle school bleachers will be removed in July. Once they're removed, we're gonna try to paint about ten feet up in the gym around just to give it a little bit of a base lift before the new bleachers are installed in August, so they'll be functional before school starts at the end of August. If anybody follows the age, I've started putting up flyers for what's being offered this summer. And there's a whole slew of things. These coaches are gonna put time in for our student athletes. There's summer soccer, there's open gym for basketball, softball skills session, baseball, ultimate pickup, wrestling, football clinics, the weight rooms open. And we are also the site for the 39th annual Southern Vermont Football Camp, which will be held in July, the week of the 15th. So the students from all over the state will attend that. We hosted it maybe fifteen years ago or so. It was usually at our local high school, but we are gonna be officiating them. That's pretty good for high school kind of update right as of now. I just wanted to give you an update on elementary. We're right now, for soccer grades three through six, have twenty-eight students registered. And their season will start the week of the 29th of August. And we'll post provisions for coaching in July, just to get a little more concrete numbers. Wrap-up from spring, which is a new season for elementary, we've not offered sports before. We ended up with two baseball teams, a major and a minor team, and we had three softball teams, and that was grades three through six. And it was definitely a learning experience. We're all involved. Really grateful for all the coaches that volunteered their time to make that happen. There were definitely some kids in the road, but being in our first year and schools are a lot different than they are at the middle school and high school level, so we'll work to, you know, make those things a little better next year in year two of offering different sports. And then I just kind of put in here, right now, the flyers that we've been putting out and sending out by email to families to know what's happening at the River this summer. Thanks for all the calls. Sports update. Any questions?
That's all great. I'm really, it's nice to see the communication going out, 'cause, you know, especially 'cause as a parent of children of just trying to always figure out what's something to do. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, I guess I just had a question. Cam, where, how does the bass fishing happen? Do they take a bus to the lake, or?
They'll have a captain of the boat. Usually the person that owns the boat is the captain, and two, two students will be on the boat at a time. And there's really only two events. There's a, there's one event really early in the season, and the season's over at the end of September, so very short, August into September. And then they have the state championship, which is held up in the northern part of the state, I can't remember the lake that they go to, but you can fish from land or you can fish on boat. So, yeah, it's, there's a four on a team, so you could have multiple teams, but one of our now, will we talk more? I've been looking into this for the last two years, and we met with Jeff Goodrich, who used to be the Essex AD. He kind of brought us fishing to the BPA. And we met with him, and Colin did a lot of, it's Colin who cleaned, he did a lot of back work to this, so we're gonna give it a go for the fall season and see how it goes.
Great, sounds really fun.
And is it an act, is it a varsity sport? Is it a, is it, it's actually a?
And there's a state championship, yes.
So great.
I love it.
And I love seeing opportunities to engage students in sports that otherwise might not engage in sports. So I think that's definitely cool, cool to see.
Thank you so much, Kim.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, all your hard work. Really, it looks like it works. It's working great.
Yes.
Okay. So that was the sports update. The next is the propane.
Stan, start walking.
Oil bids, and we got sent those out, if anyone needs them.
Hey, Stan. Hello. So what are we doing? First, we hoping that the?
Propane is on there first. It's first, yeah.
First, you wanna do that first?
Like you said in my email, the propane bid just went out to Irving, 'cause they own all our tanks, so if we, if we do wanna get competitive, we would have to buy those tanks from them. But so far, they've been treating us fairly well with the price that they've given us over, you know, since, since we went strictly to propane at the high school, not the high school, but at the Clarendon and Wallingford Elementary Schools. So what we've done is we asked for a bid of 25,000 gallons, and they came in at $1.39, 1.394, which is roughly 10 cents more than what we paid this past year. Budget-wise, you know, we budgeted more for a little higher rate, so there is a savings there of, if we were to accept the propane bid from Irving, we would be able to save $22,593 on the FY25 budget for propane. So my recommendation would be to accept the bid from Irving at $1.394.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion about this one? No? All right, all those in favor? Good, Sarah's good. All right, we're all good, unanimous there. All right, so that was the propane, and heating oil is the other next one?
With heating oil, I do send out bids to all the local dealers in the area, but it's gotten to the point now where none of them respond except for Irving and Champlain Valley. And that again was the same case this year, and they both came in fairly, very competitive with each other. Champlain breaks, 'cause they, I guess they got a big tanker to deliver fuel here at the high schools, so they usually charge us a lower price than what they would charge at the elementary schools. So their, their bid was 280 for the high school and then 285 for the, for Shrewsbury, Timethon, and Wallingford. Irving did one price, and that was at $2, 2.868, slightly more than that would be at all So there's roughly, based on the gallons we put out there, roughly $1,000 less with Champlain Valley. They are, they are current vendor. We've used them probably quite a bit for the past, I wanna say, eight to, eight years or so. They've been very, fairly good to work with. When we had our problem this past year with the Woodchill Oilers, they actually were sending trucks here pretty much every day to deliver 100 gallons.
For a week or two, they absolutely were, and they were hugely helpful through all of that, as we were sorting through our heating issues.
So again, our recommendation would be to accept the heating oil bid, which, again, from Champlain Valley, and that again would give us another savings in our budget for heating oil of 18,539.
I'll make a motion.
You have a second? Five seconds? All right, now I can have discussion.
Oh, when you say that's a savings, that's if we don't have to use more than 18,700 gallons, right? Is that a high estimate of the number of gallons?
No, we try to keep, we try to keep it conservative, because if we don't use up those gallons, we get penalized for not using all our gallons, so we, but.
I see, so you pay that no matter how many gallons?
Right, but with, but with Champlain, they always charge us the contract price. Like this year, we went over the gallons because of the high school situation. We went over by about 3,500 or 4,000 gallons, and that charged the contract price.
Honored it.
Thank you.
Good question.
Yeah, 'cause this winter was a little bit of a mild winter, too, comparatively, temperature-wise, so.
And does this, 'cause the other thing, 'cause in Tinmouth, right, they're gonna, you know, they'll have heat pumps, so like that, that consumption should be down as well for that fuel oil?
Yeah, the good thing with that, if we are under, we have a big tank here to.
You just put it in?
To develop.
Okay. Great. Okay, so we have, any more discussion? No? All right, all those in favor of accepting that motion? All good? Excellent. Okay, stand still here, 'cause the next thing is adult meal pricing for breakfast and lunch.
What about diesel?
Oh, yeah, sorry. That is true.
With the diesel bid, we, in the years I've been here, we've only gotten, one year where somebody gave us a fixed price on diesel, and they got burned. I think it was the year where diesel was five, six dollars a gallon, and they were at like 2.70 or something. So that was once, so pretty much every.
They're out of business now.
Everybody just bids the rack price plus this, you know, so Champlain is bidding based on the Valero rotten rag, which plus 15 cents. Irving is bidding based on the Daily Artist rag, plus 37 and 8 tenths cents. They each gave current rates as of today. Based on that bid, the current rate for the Champlain bid would be two, roughly 283, rounded up, and Irving would be at 288, rounded up. We would recommend, again, using Champlain. According to Tim, he likes working with them, they're very flexible, and their deliveries here for the diesel, for the buses. So we would recommend to accept the diesel bid from Champlain.
I'll make that motion.
Second? That makes a second?
If you have another.
Well, now's the time. Discussion.
So Champlain Valley, that's like a local operation, right?
Middlebury, they're in Middlebury and they cover.
Yeah, but Irving is like a national.
They're out of Canada, and they cover the whole New England.
Well, that's another plus in my mind.
Excellent. Great. Any more discussion? No? All those in favor? Fuel prices going down. All right, now we can go to adult meal pricing for breakfast and for lunch.
Okay, for the upcoming year for lunch and breakfast, I also, you know, consulted with our food service management company regards to the pricing and how they felt about it, and their recommendation from them would be to go ahead and keep the pricing the same. Adult breakfasts, we don't do a lot, so it's not really that big. We do sell some lunch meals, not a lot there, but more than breakfast. So our proposal would be to keep the pricing for adults the same for breakfast and lunch for FY25. So breakfast would be $3.25 a meal, and lunch would be $5.25 a meal.
I'll make that motion.
Make the motion. A second?
A second.
Got it. Now you would like discussion?
Yes.
So based on the conversation you had, this, I presume, takes into any account any foreseen, I know you can't predict it, but any foreseen inflation?
We've already got a signed contract with them for this upcoming year.
And that's what we did.
And I put on, that's where the district passed, that's what they're charging us per meal.
Perfect.
Yeah, I have a question. Who are the adults that eat these meals?
You want names?
I think Stan, Stan is.
Well, I haven't issued, but.
Mostly staff, right?
Yeah, staff.
Yeah, I eat one, once every two weeks when I forget my lunch.
Okay, so it's teachers or staff or just generally the adults that are around?
It's not like somebody coming into the school to eat lunch.
That's a good deal.
Parents, though, sometimes will come and have lunch with their kids.
Oh, parents, good deal, that's true.
Especially at, at the elementary school more, but.
How many of those meals do we sell?
Do you know how many we're actually doing for adult meals?
Well, like, per day? Do we do, you know, five adult breakfasts or 20, or, you know, just roughly?
So I can say without really quantitative data, but qualitative data, that here at Mill River, oftentimes the younger single teachers tend to get a lot of meals. Not, you know, so I would say, if I had to guess, I'd say probably about 10 breakfasts and about 20 lunches a day.
Okay, all right, that answers my question.
And much less at the elementary level.
Yeah, much less, maybe one or two.
Yeah, yeah.
And I wonder if just, just worth knowing that these are not necessarily different meals, it's just different pricing for the same meal, if that makes sense. So it's not a different amount of preparation, it's the same lunch line, just students pay a certain cost, adults pay a different cost, if that helps, Gray.
You know, I'll be honest, I was thinking, well, geez, you know, if there was 100 people a day buying breakfast and lunches, three bucks for breakfast is pretty darn good deal, and you should charge more. But given that the numbers are really pretty small, I'm not gonna be a pain in the rear end.
It's really mainly when folks forget their stuff on the counter, 'cause they're rushing out. I can think of like, maybe two employees who buy it on the daily.
It's my capitalist instinct, so.
All right. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor? Good, everybody's good. All right. The next thing is bylaws review.
So we built in a good chunk of time, because last meeting, when we were looking at scheduling, it was looking like it was gonna become very hard to try and identify two Saturday morning retreats over the summer to actually have quorum. The bylaws work was the first work we were gonna get started on tonight. Knowing that, you know, I'm jumping to agenda building a little bit, August 3rd was gonna be our retreat, and we're gonna focus on goals and roles and responsibilities. So we have a good chunk of time if folks wanna start looking at bylaws and start thinking about if there are things that we do wanna change.
For sure. Can you make them go up there?
Yep, absolutely.
I have a couple of things that I have questions about or just need clarification of. On the first, well, when I made the copies, anyway, section two, board membership, where it says it's about filling positions if they become vacant. And I know it says that, you know, they'll follow according to whatever the statute is regarding filling them. Do we, do we need to have something about, because I was one of those people that filled a vacancy for a while? Is this after the recommendation by the town select board? Does that need to be written in there, or is that just kind of covered with the statement about according to statute?
The statute covers that.
Okay.
Statute gets into the detail about working in consultation with, I think is the language there.
Yep.
That's a good question, though.
Okay. Another question or clarification I wanted was under section three, meetings and agenda. Part C, it mentions about at least 48 hours prior to a regular meeting, and this is about agendas, and at least 24 hours prior to special meetings. Are committee meetings considered special meetings? Do they need 24 hours? Is there something about special meetings?
Committees are considered regular meetings, so.
So it's 48 hours for them?
Technically, a regular meeting is anything that is scheduled to happen throughout the year periodically, like the first Monday or the third Monday. A special meeting would be when, like during personnel, if we said, oh, we need a personnel meeting that's outside of that regular schedule, then it becomes special. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the, the difference between regular or special just has to do with, does it follow your calendar or not?
Well, and, and when we reconvene after elections, we tend in the committees, we set up when those committees.
And those become your regular meetings then?
Yeah.
Exactly, Len.
Yeah.
Yeah, we try to do that, we try to do that way more than 48. We tend to be like, we're warning on Thursday for the next Wednesday board meeting, if that makes sense. We try to be in advance enough that if something popped up, we've got some leeway on it, still.
And it's, I wanna go on record, be appreciative of some of the folks who keep me in line.
And me.
Rebecca, thank you very much.
Rebecca does a phenomenal job.
And I know it's a pain, but, but I do appreciate it. Thank you.
And Rebecca has a great eye for detail, and she picks things up pretty quickly to where she goes. You know, she'll often say, hey, Brian, did you notice? And, and she'll be catching things and reviewing things, which is hugely helpful.
I just wanna give her the kudos for that, because.
Absolutely.
Incredible.
So with that said, this is technically our document and our opportunity. Do we wanna change that? It's our bylaws.
Being mindful that we do, we do still need to follow open meeting law, and I think both of those, the 48 and the 24, I think are codified in open meeting law. So we.
So if a committee.
Nick's right, these are our bylaws, we can change them.
I just, yeah, so if a committee that's scheduled to meet on a certain day meets on a different day and time, is that considered a special meeting?
Technically, it's a special meeting.
So, and I mean, it's just interesting to me that a special meeting's like 24 hours, but a regular meeting's 40.
Yeah.
But that's okay.
I think the intent there is that a special meeting really, really is.
Kind of an emergency.
Yeah, kinda. Even though there is still a provision in open meeting law for an emergency meeting, you can call an emergency meeting with, with no advance notice provision, actually. But I think you have to have a really, you have to, what's that, Len?
Compelling reason?
Three board members, I think that has to.
Maybe, something like that.
I think it's four.
But I think, you know, so say, say if something happened, I mean, heaven forbid, you know, if somebody got incapacitated in a way that we needed to immediately get somebody else in line to do that work, you know, you can call an emergency meeting and do that, you know, if things are really immediately.
It could be anything.
Yeah, 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 sure, sure. Could be, could be that we had some sort of disaster and we need to authorize payments really quick.
Actually, Irene, we had to have an emergency meeting, because the superintendent was stranded. Her coordinator was stranded.
So what are we gonna do? Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank goodness we haven't had to do that in a while.
Something that I noticed that was in the bylaws that I think is really important and a great thing is, under committees, with section E, under organization and officers, that committees may include non-voting members of the public who have special expertise in the subject matter. I think that's really important, because we have, we have a lot of really talented people in our community that we could definitely use their input sometimes, so I think that's great.
And I think we, we wait for committees to request folks to come in, so a good reminder that committees should be thinking about, hey, is there somebody we should pull in for this conversation?
Well, I think it's also important that board members realize that they can come to any committee meetings as well. So whether you're on the committee or not, your presence is welcomed. I think that's important, that we let folks know that.
Yeah, I find it really valuable to go to committee meetings before the board meeting, because I can clarify things before it comes to the full board.
Yeah. Couple that I noticed. I'll start at the top. The board clerk, which is duties of officers, section D, number three. That is not currently how the clerk operates today. Not saying it's wrong, just not how it operates today.
Rebecca covers a lot of that. Correct, yeah.
Where are you? Which number one? And where are.
Section D, number three, under organization.
Under Roman numeral four.
Okay, thank you. That's where I was lost. Four, D.
Right, 'cause we do not, our board clerk does not do that.
No.
Yeah. Well, you know, you could argue that the board clerk shall be responsible for arranging, not that they're the one that does it. So we have arranged. So we have arranged for Rebecca to do our minutes. So I think technically that can be accurate still.
That's true, but it's like one of those, it is the point of like, you know, you should be made aware of it when you become the clerk, that, you know, you are in charge of it and, you know, the system is in place, so you don't actually have to make a change, but.
Like that fourth bullet maybe kind of covers that.
Yeah, absolutely.
A member of the district staff may perform any of the board clerk's duties.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
You got another one?
I do have a couple more, um, so sliding down, I'll start with a Roman numeral this time. Numbers seven and eight, uh, they refer to policies, which I believe are no longer the appropriate.
Did we re, re-letter and number those?
Most likely.
Okay. I will find those and change those in a draft. Great, great to note that, Nick. Asics.
You can go, he's just looking at.
I was just going to say that my area that I was looking at and wanted more clarification on committees and charges, but I think that's better addressed at the, um.
Retreat?
Retreat, because I think it gives us more time to talk about it, but.
Well, and.
Well, I was just going to say that, um, I think some of the, um, language that's in there could be clarified or, and then we had also talked about in community engagement, the cross of somehow addressing how committees will cross-reference each other, keep things a little bit less.
From my perspective, and I, and I can just say this in terms of personnel, some part of that disappeared. The roles and responsibilities under personnel, it has a, it has a blurb there, but then there was a second part of it that talked about the, yeah, that talked about the roles and responsibilities of that committee. And I know it was approved by the board, so it wasn't like, it was just something that Lenny made up, and I don't know where it went to.
Okay.
So I think that's the kind of thing we need to look at.
Yep, maybe look at the old, because it says it was two, twenty-two was the last revision, so we can look at.
Yeah, and I, I remember, I, I think I was, we were doing some sessions, I have this vague memory of being at Clarendon in a classroom looking at bylaws back then. But I don't, I don't think that was a change, but we can pull up the old bylaws and see if that was a change in the bylaws. I think those, I think those always existed outside of the bylaws, and I think that's probably how they got lost in the shuffle, that they were never actually in the bylaws. Because I don't think the board would have taken them out at that point in time.
I just remember we voted on those in, at the full board.
Yep, yep.
So.
So let's find it.
Yeah.
Well, I have them.
Okay, good.
For personnel or for everything, Lynn?
I know for personnel, again, I can only speak for myself. There may have been others as well, I don't, I don't remember, but I know somewhere in my collection of papers here, um, I do have them.
I can pull up, the, the time previous to twenty-two, it was twenty-eighteen. So I can tell you if they were in the twenty-eighteen.
I think, I don't know.
Okay, the, that's not in the twenty-eighteen version?
No.
And what we're looking at now is the twenty-two version?
Correct, and.
You're thinking something was supposed to be added that didn't get added.
Oh, it was supposed to be added at twenty-two, but it didn't?
Maybe.
It wasn't supposed to be added, it was part of.
Twenty-six.
Doing the bylaws in twenty-twenty-two.
Okay.
It was there.
Okay.
And then. They're not, so, and, and, you know, it, it was, it was very, it was more specific, and that's why I'm, because you're talking about trying to be more specific, it talked about.
We should, we should bug BJ. We should bug BJ. Because he was, he was the one handling the draft document, I think. Does that sound right?
No, I, I mean, it was, it was. That they would vet, that the committee would vet, uh, applicants that, I mean, there were like five or six different things underneath that. And I think the other committees had them as well, more specific in terms of roles and responsibilities, because those things are pretty broad.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll, I will find it.
Okay. So that.
Because I know I have it.
Yeah, so if we do it at.
And it had to be, it was approved at a board meeting, so it's got to be in the board minutes.
And it'll be in the minutes, yeah.
Yeah, my, my wonder is, was it approved separately from bylaws? That's my wonder, does that make sense, Lynn? Maybe, who knows? We'll have to track it down.
No, I don't know, I don't know, Brian, I'll be honest.
No, fair, fair.
You know, I just know they were there and they're not. So we'll do some digging.
If you find them, you can maybe look at them at the retreat.
Yeah, yeah, and that's fine, I don't need to.
And if you can't find the rest of them, I'd bug BJ too.
Yeah.
Because I think BJ was juggling some of those documents back then.
Yeah.
So he might have something too. That I'm not finding.
And that's fine, we'll.
I have a, a kind of clarification question.
Yeah, go ahead, Stephen.
Here's here.
Yep, yep.
In, under that same committees and charges, um, I'm looking at negotiations and it's saying responsible for negotiating master agreements for both teachers and support staff, um, and I'm, so I'm wondering, is, uh, where does, is there admin negotiations? Is that officially a thing or not? And if so, where does that actually live?
I think your, your other entities as needed can cover that.
Did it say that on there?
Negotiations committee.
Oh, was that, I'm looking, sorry, I still had the twenty-eighteen version up.
Yeah, this one doesn't have it.
I still have the twenty-eighteen version, no, thank you.
It doesn't, I, I, what I'm saying, I guess.
Yeah. Well, that's funny.
It was taken out, yeah.
I wonder why that was taken out.
Is it finance, is it negotiated, is it personnel?
Yeah, I wonder why that was taken out.
Well, I think negotiations has a legal, um, aspect to it, and that is, you know, collective bargaining.
Yeah, there's going to be a lot of.
Whereas administrators do not have collective bargaining, so therefore, there's not really negotiations, I, that would be my take on it.
So then you think it would just fall under nothing or personnel or?
Yeah, I, because, uh, personnel is, actually, I mean, I'm just going on my experience. When the superintendent would submit the budget to the finance committee, it would include the recommended salaries for administrators. Finance committee would look at that. You know, shoe on it, whatever, and then it would go into the budget, and then when the budget went to the full board for approval, then it goes to voters, and the voters approve it, whatever was in that budget is what the administrator's salaries would be. And then the only difference would be that when you hire a new administrator, obviously, then the superintendent would say, okay, this is what we're offering, kind of like we've just been through, I think, um, the last couple of administrators, the principals that we've hired.
So state statute, title sixteen, state statute, labor relations, bargaining agents, covers teachers and administrators, so I think the negotiating.
If they have a bargaining, like in Rutland City, they have a bargaining unit. Mill River does not have a bargaining unit now, I would check, but I, you know.
So it, the way statute reads is administrators may select organizations to resent, represent them on their negotiations council and collective negotiations with the school board negotiations council. So I, I would imagine that that could be something that's fairly loosely decided that the, um, well, does, does Rutland have an actually association with like a national administrators organization?
I'm not sure exactly.
Okay.
I'm not sure exactly who represents them, but I know.
If administrators may select the organization, then I, I, you know, would imagine that they could select whichever organization they chose.
Right, you couldn't like, like the teachers chose NEA, and, you know, for a while it was AFTN, NEA, I remember those days, when there were two unions.
But back in those days too, with AFT, we even had conversations around, should we go out on our own? So I think we could have chosen to have our own local union and not be affiliated with NEA or AFT.
You could, but you haven't, so that aspect would not fall to the negotiations committee, in my opinion, but that's something maybe we could research and put that on the agenda.
Certainly a good question.
That's part of the clarification of committees that I'm, I'm trying to figure out, yeah.
But, but just for sake of argument, if the administrators decided for an organization to represent themselves in negotiations, I think the negotiation committee would have to, just based on what's in statute.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure.
That committee would have to do that work.
Absolutely, 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 absolutely. But I don't think that's, you know, the same as the group of, group of people getting together and say, okay, we're going to negotiate as a group, I don't think the districts under any responsibility recognize that as a group thing legally, unless you're associated, I think, and that's, that's what I think maybe we need to do some research on.
I think you have to ask a lawyer.
Ask the lawyer, we have a lawyer.
Yeah, Nick.
Let me start with the Roman numeral, oh, it's five.
Oh, that was an easy one.
Treasury, um, letter D, the budget, um, it lists two Vermont statute items, which as I'm looking at them, I don't think are correct anymore. With proposal of the annual budget, or they're incomplete, there may be something missing.
Oh.
Because there's sixteen, VSA chapter eleven, and when you go there, it lists like three dozen officers. And then the same thing with seventeen, VSA chapter fifty-five, it lists three dozen different studies of committees, studies of elected officials, verification of votes, and members on the union, transition of full operations.
Nick, I think what's happening is, I wonder, this is a guess, this is a big guess, if, if it's a safe bet to say that title sixteen, chapter eleven, covers budgeting, because it, if you cited title sixteen, chapter eleven, subchapter three, seven thirty-two, that might change to be seven thirty-four or seven thirty-eight, that I wonder if they did that very generally to keep the document from having to be updated every year, maybe? Yeah. Because, yeah, chapter eleven has a bunch of things in it, but it does have budget in it.
Yeah, it just reads funny to me that the board shall propose an annual budget in ordinance with.
Yeah.
This.
With this gigantic chunk of statute, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, if the board wanted to cite that more specifically, we can definitely update the bylaws to cite it more specifically.
I'm not saying it's wrong because it's all related to education budget, it's just when you go to look at it, there's a lot there.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
So should we, um, I'm sorry.
I'm good.
I, you know, I noticed as we're going down, seven, eight, I'll have policy, C-three, F-nine, so all of those policy numbers need to be checked, correct?
C, C-three needs to be changed, F-nine is current still.
Okay.
But C-three, and, and that's a great, just check real quick, the only change that I have right now to put in a draft is changing C-three to A-six. Did I miss anything that anybody wanted to propose as a change?
I don't think there's been any other specifics yet.
Well, I think, weren't we looking at the last policy meeting? And there were like double Bs, B-one, and so I think we need to take a, and that, the policy committee certainly can, can do that, but I think we need to take a look at.
Yes, the policy.
That they did, because we did a lot of renumbering, you know, Bs became As, As became Cs, and that kind of thing.
At least as currently listed on our website, there are two B-ones, two B-twos, and two B-threes.
Yeah.
Because we renumbered something to B-one but had an existing B-one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But that's.
And it would have been already, like, the ones that we had got, we had changed B-ones to As for, or, you know, and so it shouldn't, like, it should not, there shouldn't be two B-ones anymore, we went through the actions of removing them, but it's probably just still on the server and not.
Oh, no, no, I, I really do think it's, um, I do think it's a case of we shifted a number and we didn't make a space for it, does that make sense?
No, we explicitly, in all the, well, let me, when we were doing it, we were not doing that, we were explicitly removing the ones that had numbers and filling in the ones that weren't.
But we, so for an example, B-one, board member education, I could be wrong, but I don't think we ever rescinded B-one, board member education, but we did update.
I think we moved it to A.
Yeah, so we, that was the whole part, the, so everything that's board-related should be in As now.
I don't think yet.
Well.
I can double check on that, but I don't think we moved it yet. I think the intention was to do that.
I mean, I.
But it didn't happen yet.
I, we were making, I mean, it'd be strange if it's not, and we can go back to the minutes and find out, but, like, we were explicitly doing that. We were saying, okay, here's the policy that is, should, okay, we're moving all of these to As, and in that process, we were getting rid of the, rid of them, but.
Yeah, I will, I will sort through, but I, I will tell you, when I did those, I combed through a lot of stuff to make sure we didn't miss something, and I couldn't find that, that we had changed those ones yet. I'll, I'll sort through that again to see.
I will too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I got them.
And I'll add it to my list.
My problem is, I'm going to see.
Yeah, I mean, if I just do a quick search for, we haven't touched that one that I can see, um, in a while.
That doesn't really make, I, I don't understand how that happened, because we started at the top and we're working our way down, so it's very strange.
It could be a year ago or two year ago.
No, it was this, this last past year, we just started doing this whole renaming thing.
Yeah.
Like in the fall or the summer.
August of twenty-three, maybe?
Yeah. Okay, any, do we, for by, any more bylaw things we want to talk about? Because we, we somehow slipped into policy.
I mean, I think that was relevant.
It's all important.
That was a relevant tangent.
Oh, it's fine, it's good to know anyway that it's what's going on. Just because we're here in an open meeting, I wasn't sure whether or not, because one of the things we're supposed to do for board membership is every time there's a census to reevaluate to make sure that the board representation is the same. And I didn't feel like going back into minutes and just finding out whether or not that had been done, and I just did it on my own, and it, it's still the same. It's actually, Wallingford-Clarendon parody, the, the spread of votes is actually more in line with what it's supposed to be, and, you know, Tinmouth is still the Wyoming of the district. There's still not enough.
Not for long, you guys sold a bunch of houses.
That's true, and they might be like five extra people.
Recent year percentage significantly.
Yeah, that's true.
I did hear that folks want to revisit the committee charges.
Yeah.
We can put that on our retreat day, I think that starts to squeeze our retreat day though, so my, my recommendation would be that committees, if committees meet between now and then, that committees have some of that conversation in their committee meetings, so they can bring something to the retreat that's ready to go, uh, because if. Because if we think about a three-hour retreat, maybe, and we were saying, oh, three's going to be, three's going to be more than we need, I think if you could easily eat up an hour on bylaws, if you look at each committee charge by itself, but I think if you bring something ready to the meeting, that can take, you know, 20 minutes, maybe.
Is everyone satisfied? Well, maybe not satisfied, but okay with moving on?
Do, I have one question, sorry.
Yes.
I just want to be clear, I'm not going to touch anything in bylaws until after retreat, and then likely after retreat, we would bring the full board for approval. Fair?
Yeah.
I, if you could just create a draft with the things we talked about.
Yep.
I mean, we didn't vote on them or anything, and it will eventually come to the full board. I think it'd be easier at the retreat, get the things we talked about today, so we don't go back and retread.
And to be clear, the only thing I'm doing is updating that one policy to A6, and I can create that draft, absolutely.
I'll update that. You're gonna, yeah, I guess. Oh, you're gonna check on the VSA, the budget.
Do, do folks, do folks actually, do folks want a more specific citation there? Because if you do, I can write it in. If you don't, I'll leave it as is.
Well, I guess I'll leave it up to your judgment as to whether there's something more specific that should be in there and make that recommendation to the board.
Yeah, no, fair.
I also was wondering if, there was something I just saw. Oh. Are you going to follow up on the, was there a follow-up on the negotiations and the, that piece of it?
Of whether or not it, yeah.
Whether, yeah.
The legality of.
What the negotiations means and everything, so we have that for our retreat, so that we have the information. Either following up with a lawyer or.
That'll be part of charges, right?
Well, it's just whether or not, if, I mean, the question is, is whether a self-collected, a self-collected group is the same as an organization.
Yeah.
Right? That's your que, that's the question.
A bargaining unit.
Right.
And whether negotiations.
So if you declare yourself a bargaining unit versus having a.
What do you have to actually do to be organization designated?
Yeah, to be organized.
Right.
Bargaining unit, I believe is the legal.
I can, I mean, that's a really quick, easy one. I could just ask our lawyer.
That would be.
That'd be great.
I can do that.
That's what we need.
I will, I'll definitely do that.
Okay. Moving on to personnel, contracts, or whatever you want.
You looking at me?
I am.
Yes, we did meet earlier this evening, so we have some contracts to bring to the full board. Okay. First of all, I'll make a motion to give a contract to Cassidy Colburn, 1.0 full-time equivalency as a custodian.
I'll second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Thank you. Next, again, I'll make a motion to offer a contract to Peter Hamel, 1.0 full-time equivalency for a fifth-grade teacher, as a fifth-grade teacher at Wallingford.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Thank you. Next is, I'd like to make a motion to offer a contract to Alexandra Welch Miller as a special education counselor, 1.0 full-time equivalency.
I'll second.
Thank you. And I think we do need some discussion. Brian, if you could just clarify for us, please.
Yep. So if you remember a couple of meetings back, we had hired somebody to be our special ed coach, who is currently a school psychologist. So shifting into that special ed role, we created a vacancy for a school psychologist, because that was an internal hire. We tried posting school psychologist, and we had very little luck finding somebody, so we started looking at, okay, well, what does this, what does this job really entail? And actually, there was a fair bit of IEP services that were counseling services that the individual was, was providing. And when we talked about, okay, well, what's the most important, important part of this job to cover? It was those counseling services, not the eval services at this point in time. So Coral came to our, I think it was our last personnel meeting, actually, to talk with the personnel committee around the need for that shift, and to ask if it was all right to, to shift from trying to hire a school psychologist to trying to hire a counselor to serve IEP services. So this is the individual that, that we've selected to fill that position. Is that?
Yeah, thanks. Yeah. Any other?
I have a question. So does this free up other counselors who are non-special ed to work with non-special ed kids?
In, yeah, in theory, I think it's, it's always hard when we look at our counseling team to, to balance what we need for, say, college career readiness and what we need for students who need counseling, so.
I mean, you're not doing college career readiness in elementary school, are you?
No, but that, that counselor could be pushing into a classroom, giving a full-class lesson to all students.
Right.
So if they're working one-on-one with a student, it's always pulling somebody away from doing something else.
Is that part of their job description or not part of their job description?
For, for elementary folks?
Yeah, yeah.
To push into classrooms?
No, to work individually or small group with students.
If needed, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I'm assuming that there's mental health needs that are not special ed counseling needs, and I'm a little concerned that we're hiring a full-time person to do special ed counseling.
Yep.
And I just want to make sure kids who maybe aren't identified as special ed, or even as, as having a disability, have access to individual counseling, even if it's for a short term and a referral.
And does, does hiring this person help with the capacity everywhere else? Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that's my question.
And if it's helpful, so if you think back, Carol, all the way to when Gwen was here, when you were here, then we filled Gwen's position with somebody else, then we filled it with somebody else. This is, this would be person number six, the same position, that has only served IEP mandated counseling. That person's position still has enough overflow that our other school counselors still have to serve IEP counseling. And the needs have gotten so great that we actually have an RMH clinician upstairs in addition to this, this special ed counselor, who is also serving IEP students. So right now, we have gotten to the point where our school counselors are serving EST students and a couple 504 kids, and doing all the college career and scheduling work and all the emergency services, like, so suicidal ideation, non-suicidal, self-injury, boyfriend.
Right, right. Jody, all I'm trying to understand is, and that's helpful, thank you, what I'm trying to understand is, the person, the role that this is replacing was a school psychologist role, someone who was.
Correct.
Apparently working half-time as a school psychologist. That person, I assume, was doing testing, observation, evaluation, okay? So now that person, that full-time position, or that half-time position, is rolled into a counseling position.
Uh-huh.
So there's now this full-time counselor who's all special ed. We have one full-time psychologist, and I'm concerned about his workload, in all honesty, by having a counselor who's not going to be doing any of the support in terms of evaluations and observations and consultations that a school psychologist usually does. So what I'm, so what I'm trying to get a, a handle on is if, okay, so now this has been expanded, this role that was half-psychologist, has now been expanded to full-time counseling, only special ed, that, that will hopefully, and I'm not talking about the high school and career counseling and all that, I'm talking about elementary school kids that we know are still probably, I mean, I'm not in the schools, you guys can tell me, are still recovering from the pandemic in terms of social skills and, and all of, you know, and just the, the trauma of, you know, having to worry about, you know, can they talk to their friend without getting sick, you know? I mean, those are real things that kids are dealing with, and they're still dealing with it. And I don't want us to, you know, just like, kind of, you know, oh, yeah, they're, everybody's doing everything. I just want to hear that things are, are targeted. So are you in charge of counseling? Like, is that your?
So I, one of my endorsements is school counseling.
No, no, I know, but your role as assistant superintendent is it supervision of, because when, you know, back in the day, the school psychologist was, had a clinical team, and they met regularly to sort out, you know, caseloads and stuff. So I, and I, I mean, I'm not trying to belabor this, I don't want to, you know. All I'm saying is I want to understand how switching from a psychologist to a full-time counselor, what impact that's going to have on kids who are not special ed. Not that I, my heart isn't always special ed, but I understand. I think there, I, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm assuming there are a bunch of elementary school kids who continue to need mental health support, not major, but someone to talk to, someone to recognize that, you know, they're struggling with just the social, being back in.
So here's the concrete things I can tell you.
And can I throw one thing in? There's a reason that we sought out a grant last year to add an additional counselor, because we see that need.
So there's an additional counselor.
So we've added an additional counselor this year, and we'll also be funding that through grant funding next year.
And where does that counselor work?
We fund the middle school counselor with a stronger.
So that's still, I'm still stuck on elementary.
But here's, but here's the concrete, here's the concrete things I can tell you about elementary, though. This position is working with foundations at the elementary level. This position, working with foundations, frees up so much of the elementary counselor's time.
That's, exactly.
If Paula was here, she would tell you how much time that frees up. I can also tell you that all of last year, we had to make do with two out of our three elementary counselors, which meant our two elementary counselors had to serve extra schools.
Right, right.
This year, we have a third coming in. So we.
But the board, you know, I mean, we leave it up to administration to work all those details out. But the board is in charge of approving funding, and I'm just trying to understand, or at least make sure, that as we increase this special ed counselor, that that's going to have a positive impact on kids. And I'm pretty much, I know, you know, Mill River takes a lot of time, and that's been one of my goals, is to make sure the elementary school, or the elementary school in the town that I represent, and, you know, these other people from other towns can agree, that they, that those kids are going to get what they need. And so it sounds like they are, and I'll leave it at that.
I think worth noting, too, that even though this person is under the special ed umbrella, we have more flexibility to serve non-special ed students than we had in the past.
Oh, I had asked you that before, and I thought I had heard that, no, they wouldn't be serving special ed, but, okay.
I think the first thing they're going to do, because if we have, if we have services written into IEPs, the first thing they're going to do is make sure they can serve those. As they have time and space, and we can work them in, you know, appropriate groups, we can serve non-special ed students. So like, foundations program is not just a special ed program. We can accept students in there and have accepted students in there who are non-special ed, if that makes sense.
Well, that's a whole other conversation I'd like to have, but not tonight.
And, and part of the reason we brought this to the last personnel committee was so we could have the conversation, so we could make sure it was appropriate, because we didn't want to go out and try and hire somebody, when we couldn't answer questions and give folks.
I don't, I don't have a problem with the position. I'm just trying to clarify the responsibilities of the position.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
I don't know, there's nothing coming up in a little while. I'll be right back.
Okay. All those in favor? Thank you. Last item from the personnel committee. I'm assuming, if you haven't already, the board members have access to the superintendent evaluation. And if you haven't accessed those 27 pages, please feel free to do that. But I think it's important that we, as a personnel committee, and embracing the board as well, I would like to ask for a special personnel committee meeting, the 26th of June at 6:00 PM. And again, I would open that to any and all who would like to come, and I would suggest, if you do come, and if you have any input, that you take the time to go over the evaluation so that we can, here's the process, and I guess I have to go through this, because not everybody's aware of it. This evaluation came about as a result of personnel committee, board members, and Brian meeting. This is the probably fourth generation of the evaluation that we've done. I, I personally, not because it's just me, but I think it's much better than it was when we first started this process. So one of the things that comes about as a result of this evaluation is we can sit down with Brian, and Brian can sit down with us, and say, okay, I don't really do that, so that doesn't need to be in the evaluation. Or we can say, well, this is something that we really want to focus on, so it allows us to update it and change it. Because I really think, again, in my opinion, this is a very fluid document. So I'm planning on, and I'll get the agenda to Rebecca, and to warn, that it'll be the 26th of June at 6:00 PM here, and all are welcome. And that's it.
And I think, to Carol's point earlier, even if you're not a member of that committee.
Right.
You know, might be a nice thing for you to be around to.
I want your input.
Yeah.
You know, this isn't me doing this. It's this board. And it, I'm sorry, but it, it's one of our basic charges. Between, you've got budget, you've got policy, and evaluation of the superintendent. That's it. Our jobs are easy.
Easy.
Simple.
Simple, and not easy.
And then, do you have a regular scheduled meeting?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Because we don't have one in the beginning of July, we don't have a regular board meeting. So that, that's why I wanted to schedule this.
Excellent. Okay.
Thank you.
The next thing is policy.
There's nothing else you want to take care of as far as contracts go?
Uh, do we want to do that?
Contracts.
Contracts. I guess we can, if you want to look at administrative contracts at this point.
Given, given the July 1s coming, I think it would.
Well, do, let, let me ask this. Have the teachers okayed and approved their?
It has not been ratified.
Has it been given to them to ratify, or where is it at? Would, would you mind speaking to them?
Behind the scenes, behind the scenes, numbers, details are being figured out, if that makes sense. So everything has, and correct me if I'm misstating anything, we have tentative agreements on everything. So we are done, and we can, you know, give that update.
You guys are, feel like negotiations are over, and you just got to tie up the loose ends, okay?
The delay came because Stan was on vacation. So we had to wait.
Stan.
So that's, I mean, it wasn't, so that's why, that's why it's not further along.
Can I ask a question? You can tell me, it's none of my business. Go away, Stan.
Sorry, sorry, Stan. You deserve a vacation.
Sorry, we're throwing you under the bus, so you can't be here. Um, no.
Well, I didn't know you guys were here.
Can I, can I ask you guys a question? And I, I don't know if this is appropriate.
Can I, can I ask you guys a question, and I, I don't know if this is appropriate?
Girl, ask.
I, I'm hearing that there's no salary schedule anymore with steps and all of that. Is that true?
That is true for everyone except new hires.
Okay, so how do you determine, assuming that this contract is ratified and you agree, how do you, um, and, and my understanding is that whatever percentage it is, I won't say, because it's not ratified yet, that that's a bulk sum. And then who determines how much each person gets? I, I would assume every teacher gets the same amount, correct?
It depends what's been negotiated, and then if we start answering that question, we start getting into.
Negotiate, okay. But in general, you know, I mean, not every single teacher is going to get whatever that percentage of increase is, correct?
Again, it depends on how it's negotiated.
We think it's fair.
Yeah, I mean, can we say the, like, the balance, or not?
I wouldn't go, yeah, I wouldn't go into.
You don't have to give me any information, but I'd be curious, once you guys settle.
It'll be explicitly written in the contract.
Could we explain how the previous contract was done?
We could talk about what happened in the previous contract.
That would be helpful.
Let's see, I can't remember the last contract. The first year was done on a flat increase of 4%.
Every teacher got 4%, high, low, medium.
The second year was done on a fixed amount. So we took, you know, the existing roster of the, when negotiations were started, we took the total salary amount times the agreed-upon rate, which was 4% divided by the FTEs, came up with a fixed amount, and that fixed amount was added to each teacher. So they got the same amount, but the percentage would be different.
Okay, so that's what you guys are still in, that hasn't been ratified yet.
It's been tentatively agreed to.
That information, they're waiting for me to send to them, so they can review what it looks like.
Okay, and do you send them one of each options, or?
I send them what the tentative agreement is, and they'll get a list of all the teachers, what the salaries are currently at, and then blah, 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 based on the tentative agreement.
Okay, that's good. I don't want to mess anything up. I'm very happy that we're close, but thank you.
Okay, thanks, Sam. Moving right along. So do we want to talk about administrative contracts?
That's fine. Do we need to?
Then we need a motion of some sort, I guess.
Right. My question is, is do we need to have further discussion in an executive session before we have a pub, a public discussion? Or, and I don't, I don't, I'm unsure of that.
I, I, and I don't know, because we're just talking, and we weren't talking percentages.
Right.
So if that's the case, then do we want to talk percentages in terms of admin salaries? I'm guessing not in public session.
Right.
I, I thought that was the purpose of the special meeting last week, was to have that discussion.
Yeah, but we didn't take any action.
Correct. And we said.
And we said we were going to take action tonight.
Right. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion, and then if we have to go into executive session after a motion is made, is that? Or, well, I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion that we offer the existing administrators 4% as has been put in the budget that the voters voted on.
Right. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
I'm second.
For year one.
For year one.
For one year, yeah.
All right, so now we have discussion. So does anyone want to?
Well, my discussion was in my motion. I, I think that's what was in the budget, and that's. And, and the reason I was kind of wiggling around with these guys is I know that even though there was a 6%, cancel that, there was an agreed-upon amount that possibly every teacher would not get that amount, depending on how this all works out. Sorry, I slipped that out. And I don't even know if that's the amount, quite honestly. I know that was the amount Brian had recommended for administrators.
I did bring a recommendation to the board.
Yes, and so that's where I got that. However, I feel strongly that the budget was set, the salaries were set, and every administrator had access to that budget to look at. And if they had any concerns about the amount that was put in, that would have been the time to bring it to the board or to the finance committee. So that's my discussion.
Yeah, Gray, I just want to chime in and second that exact thought, that that's what's in the budget, that's the money we have, that's the reality that the town is voting on, and that's what we should support.
And I will remind the board that nobody came to you, because that was not what they were told in the fall. If that's what folks were told in the fall, I.
I, I haven't, I wasn't here. I just sat here two months ago.
And I, I was, and that's a conversation that I've been very clear with the board about, that that was not the conversation we had with folks. And my recommendation is based on the conversation that we've had with folks all year long.
Which folks? When you say folks?
Our administrators.
Okay, that's fine. You, I mean, you had that, and when the budget was being built in December, you had an opportunity at that point.
And I was fully transparent with the board and told them what my recommendation would be in the spring.
Well, I don't have any of that, and I don't know if there are minutes to.
And I have shared that, I have shared that multiple times, I feel like, with the board over the last several months. And in April, when we brought contracts for renewal, I was pretty open that we were waiting in April to see what we were going to do.
Right, I understand all that, Brian, but I don't think that's. I, I, I don't know how the finance committee operated, you know, in, in the past, in the past year. I know how the finance committee operated eight years ago. And that was, the finance committee would put an amount. I mean, sometimes it'd go up a lot, sometimes it wouldn't go up at all. The administrators could meet with the superintendent or could meet with the business manager or could come to the finance committee and make their argument. But that's what was put in the budget, so that's why I make, that's why I made that motion. Okay, I don't think that would be appropriate, Jody, for you to chime in. I'm sorry. I mean, but it's up to the chair, but.
Oh, yeah, I mean, well, we have to, the, I think, because we made a precedent for, we, basically, we just have to agree as a, as a board, to say whether or not it's okay. It's not necessarily my decision, it's the decision of the board, because I looked that up one time. So it's whether or not people are okay with it or not.
I would suggest that we do a roll call vote.
Carol, we know you're a nay.
I'm a yay.
A yay on, on, on not, on.
Oh, on whether to, to let Jody?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, I'm okay.
You're okay without any issues?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have any video skills.
So I, I don't, well, if you're, I don't want to question.
Oh, well, it was whether, I thought you were saying it was inappropriate. You were, I thought you were saying you didn't want Jody to.
I didn't, I, I mean, usually when you're discussing a motion, I don't think the public generally weighs in, but I might be wrong about that. Yeah, I mean, it's.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, you just have to, I think I've looked this up in the past, and basically, how our rules state, you know, like, we as a board can, can decide to let someone.
Yes, exactly.
To talk. So that's why I was saying, if we want to vote, if we want, if, I don't know if people are, how people are feeling, but since you've said you weren't comfortable with it, then we can, I would just take the roll call vote, and then we can be, move on.
Okay, well, yeah, take a roll. I say no.
Okay, no, Glenn?
Again, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, of where we're, whether we're going to have non-board input out for this.
For the motion.
For this motion. Basically, are we letting Jody, do we want Jody to have a, be able to?
Sure.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, it's fine.
We're all okay? All right.
I'm good.
Good. All right, we have a majority. They're all good in there?
Yeah, I, if you're just talking about Jody.
Yeah, just Jody. All right, great.
Gosh, I did not mean to cause that.
Oh, I'm fine.
No worries.
And it is totally okay. If not, I just, we, I did not know as an administrator that there was an opportunity previously to speak to the board about this. So if it would be appropriate, I would love the chance to speak in executive session about it, and if not, that's totally okay.
So does anyone, do we want to have any more discussion? Does anyone want to make any other moments on this motion? No? All right, so then all those in favor, or do we want, do you want to, I'm, we can either do a roll call, or we can just do all those in favor? I don't remember how that actually gets decided.
Well, let's just do all in favor.
Let's just do all in favor, okay.
From there.
Can we just clarify exactly what it is for all in favor here? It's been a little.
Right, so the motion on the table is that we would, the admin would get the 4% that was written into the budget as their increase for this, their first year of their contract.
Perfect, understood.
That's what you understood the motion to be? Okay. All right, so all those in favor, say aye. All right, all those nay. Ridley Williams and Stephen. And Gray, are you, you were before, you had your hand up before?
That's correct. I'm sorry, I was a yay on that vote.
Okay.
I didn't see the reply for even 4%.
Okay. Motion carries. What that doesn't include is the second year, wasn't a part of that motion.
Correct.
Right.
And I think what we, what I would suggest we do is you just, when we hire a new administrator, we basically give them a salary for the first year, and say, "Year two will be determined by budget considerations."
And I also think that we need to clarify how budget or how administrative salaries are determined. I don't think that administrators should come to the board. I think we have a finance committee that reviews budgets that are put there by the superintendent, by building principals, and that's where that whole conversation needs to happen. But that's something I think we can clarify, maybe, again, looking at committee roles.
All right, now we're moving on to policy.
Policy. I would like to make a motion to adopt for a first reading B-10 and E-6.
I'll make a motion.
I made the motion.
I'll second it.
Second motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
B, B-10's the tobacco one, right?
Yes, newly revised and rewritten.
Ah, yes. Good job.
And E-6 is safety and security of school facilities, which is being re-adopted with a new date for our new historical records.
Does that include cameras and stuff?
Cameras and stuff will be its own.
I know, I, I mean, but when we say school safety and security, it's not in there at all.
It's a same, it's a different policy.
Okay, I should read it. Okay, I get it. Sorry.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Looks like we got them all. Our next meeting will not be July, so sticking with the second Tuesdays, it will be August 13th. B and G, that's me again. We did not have a meeting since our last meeting. Our next meeting is actually Monday coming up, the 24th. End report. Thank you very much.
Question?
Yeah.
I understand that there's a gentleman, a young man, student here, who is interested in what, the engine that's out in the cogenerator block. Used to be referred to as Toby. And he, he's, because it's not being used, and he's a local boy. And, and I know he spoke with the building and ground. Tim. So I just thought I'd put a good word in that if he wants to take it, you know, for a dollar or whatever, we might need to make it legal. He's talking about putting it on a tractor and.
So we have a meeting Monday, next Monday, so we'll get it on.
Yeah, yeah. I told him to come to Building and Ground.
Has he talked to Tim?
Huh?
Has he talked to Tim about it?
No, I have not. He has.
No, he has. Okay.
He talked to Tim, and Tim actually brought him in to see the engine.
My only question would be liabilities, if he gets hurt removing it or et cetera.
We can look into that.
Yeah, I, you know, there's probably some legality stuff there.
Outside of that, we have no use for it, right?
It's been sitting out there a long, long time.
Have to pay to get rid of it, so.
Yeah. He's willing to take the antipathy. So anyways, that's all.
Okay.
Community engagement?
Well, we're going to have our meeting on Wednesday, July 17th, from 6 to 7. All board members are welcome. We're going to work on our charge, I think, a little bit, or at least clarify that. We've done some work on that. And also, I think we're hoping to kind of plan out sort of a year of, what do we call them? They're not forum kind of meetings around, in each of the schools to meet with community members, parents, teachers, and around specific issues such as budgeting, which is, I think, going to be a big thing this next year. But, you know, staffing and how, how all those decisions are made, and clarify the role of the board and what we can and can't do. So hope to see you all there.
Thank you very much. Negotiations is next, and I'm assuming we're just going to wait until they're all finished.
I think it's safe, safe to say that we have reached a tentative agreement.
Yeah, for sure. And I, I just appreciate everybody's, the negotiation teams on both sides. I think it was, you know, not the easiest thing, but I, I really appreciate that we got to a place.
Yeah.
The next is finance and pay orders.
I suppose that's me. Can, can, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
We haven't had a meeting since our last board meeting. Ryan, would you be able to read pay orders?
Absolutely. I've got a payroll warrant dated June 19th, 2024. I've got a regular payroll warrant in the amount of $9,338.25, another in the amount of $616,110.11, and a third in the amount of $6,805.46.
I wash the dishes.
Somebody want to make that motion? Do we have a second?
We'll second.
There we go. All right. All those in favor?
Okay, I've got accounts payable warrant dated 6/19/2024. General fund in the amount of $554,600. $554,675.47, officials in the amount of $3,475.0, general fund in the amount of $16,754.89, after-school program in the amount of $871.77, lunch program in the amount of $5,623.56, and lunch reimbursement general fund in the amount of $60,811.81, and that totals $642,212.50. We have student activities from Mill River in the amount of $6,477.82, student activities Clarendon in the amount of $136.38, student activities Shrewsbury in the amount of $335.79, Wallingford student activities in the amount of $290.0, that's totaling from the student activities account $7,239.99.
Motion? Thank you. Second?
You all second. Gray?
Gray, get to this time.
Hi.
All those in favor? Don't worry. That's everybody.
And we actually have a third tonight. Since our audit has cleared and all of that fun stuff, we have a accounts payable transfer dated 6/19/2024. This is transferring funds into the district building sinking fund per the voted articles that we put on the ballot, the amount of $550,000.
Have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Cool. Second? Oh, Doug's got the second. Discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Everybody.
Do we have to authorize you?
Yeah.
To sign those? I would make that motion.
We can do that.
I'll second.
But you want to do that now?
Yeah. Okay. All right. So we're giving me, the, the motion is to give me the right to sign the.
The authority.
The authority. Sign.
No rights. You have no rights.
That's true. Thank you very much.
The pay orders.
Pay orders. All right. So all those in favor? Yep, there we go. Got everybody. Lovely. And we don't have another finance meeting planned for the pursuit.
September, right?
Correct. Right. Our goal is, we're going to meet probably in September.
That number.
Okay. The ad hoc committee is the last of the committees. Just need to open up my email quick. So I'm just going to, we had a, our last ad hoc committee meeting was this past Monday, and as the committee, we were charged to come back to give a report to the full board. And so I'm just going to read that. It's in our, the board materials, and it'll be available if people would like to read it. So, the ad hoc staff retention committee report. Our charge was identifying causes and trends of employee turnover and retention with a timeline of five months ending in June 2024. After the committee was formed, we had several interviews to gain insight on the factors that may be leading to teachers and staff leaving the district. During the interviews, we made two things clear. We were there to listen in order to further understand any of the issues. And the second point was that as a board, we were limited in scope for actions that we could take. Our responsibilities include hiring, evaluating the superintendent, the adoptions of budgets, policies, and goals. We are not in control of the daily running of the schools in our district. This process has enabled us to be better informed as board members. It's allowed us to ask better questions during our meetings and to focus on policy that will continue to improve our schools. These interviews help us make sure our goals and visions are being met. The committee heard from over a dozen individuals and several reoccurring topics emerged, some of which we as a board are not in charge with affecting. However, there are some topics which we can address. Problems with students' use of personal and district technology was a point we heard often. Our district and board needs to reevaluate current policy on the use of phones in our schools. The state recently left it to individual districts to develop policies that work for their schools. And this committee would like to ask the policy committee to develop such a policy that will limit problems with all the screens that our students have access to, as well as policy for all district employees' interactions with students via social media and texting. Discipline was reported, was reported to be inconsistent. We have identified a need to develop clarity with administrative structure and responsibility as it relates to student behaviors. Finally, there is still a lingering unease between staff, the board, and administration. Trust takes time to reestablish. We have heard many past instances of that trust being broken. We as a committee believe that the board has made steps to improve our relationship and will continue to do so as we move forward. In summary, we suggest the board can sit, the board consideration of the following: policy of personnel device use in our schools, faculty and student social media usage, administrative approaches to student behavior, clarification of administrative structure and responsibilities, student use of school-issued technology. Again, I just want to thank the committee members that took part, the board members who are active outside of that. I really want to recognize all the people that did come and talk to us, and I just really appreciate that we were able to, I think, accomplish something in that amount of time that we had. And I think we as a full board outside of the committee can, can make changes that are in our purview as a board to do to help create a better environment for our schools and continue to prove what we've been doing so far. We are officially dissolved as a committee, and so our charge is, is complete, so we can take, we won't ever have that on our agenda.
Just Josh, I just want to make sure that the date and the committee members get on that report. I think that would be important.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We can do that, for sure.
Yeah, I'd like to chime in for just a minute.
Yep.
On that report, because it touched on two issues that are particularly important to me, and that is the use of personal communications. Let's call it what they are, smartphones in school, and also the use of school-issue technology to access social media. I was just reading yesterday about how Los Angeles was voting to ban, in the strongest terms, the use of cell phones and smartphones in schools, and there are technologies available that allow that policy to actually be enforced, not just something that's written on a piece of paper, that technologies that make it impossible for students to use smartphones while in school. And I think the evidence is increasingly clear that this is incredibly destructive to the learning environment, to the social development, and to just the general health of schools. So I guess, if you haven't figured out already, this is like a really important issue to me. So as a newcomer to the board, I'm not really sure, like, what avenue to follow, like, what the procedure is for dealing with that. But I think it is really critical. We need to, we need to get on that and get on it hard because it's really screwing things up. So that's my two cents.
Yep. I mean, it's explicitly a policy that we can create, and then part of that policy will be asking the administration for the procedures of it, and then as the board, we can then come back and ask what is occurring, basically. So like, that, that's the, the steps that we'll follow. So it'll be up to the policy committee, and I'm, I'm not sure, Gray, if you're on the policy committee or not, but obviously.
I am.
So that's great. So then you, that will be where you can discuss it, and any board member and any community member will be able to participate in that as well.
That's great.
I also think it's important that we include the administration in creating that policy, because we're not in this, in these buildings on a day-to-day basis. We don't necessarily know the, the things that you folks face. And so I think it would be really helpful for us as a board to hear from teachers, administration, in terms of what do they think will work and how can we help them to build that piece.
Well, I, I just, I completely agree with that statement. There is no point in crafting a policy that the teachers and administrators don't, A, support 100%, and B, believe can actually be effectively enforced. So, you know, we have all the theory in the world, but they're the ones that have to execute the policy. So that would be the only way to come up with something that's actually workable.
And actually, also, the technology, I don't know what his title is. BJ. Why don't I say BJ? Because, as you said, if there's technology that would be.
Helpful.
Helpful, then he should be part of that conversation as well. But he's an administrator, so that would be.
Go ahead, Nick.
Gray, I don't, I think it'd be hard pressed to find a teacher that doesn't agree with you. So I think it'll be a, a hard press for us in policy to figure out how we navigate this. I think the state didn't do any of us any favors when they looked at this six months ago and said, "We're going to leave it up to the individual schools," because it would have been relatively easy to say this is a state mandate. Now that it's up to the individual schools, it's going to be like walking on thin ice. But it is certainly something that we have to look at and deal with sooner than later.
Yeah. And the other part about it is, we do have to, the other thing is, we're, we're going to get some phone calls, but they're, they're going to be the ones that get yelled at about it all the time. So it'd also be a part of our job as a community, you know, relations is general, and just generally as a board, to make sure that we are vocalizing our support for it when it does come through and help, you know, keep the messaging positive about it.
Well, I, I agree with all of that. Clearly, it has to be a collective decision with consensus from the board, the teachers, administrators, and everybody, because it's going to cause a huge uproar with parents who don't agree with it. And we need to make sure it's enforceable, and that means having the people that actually have to deal with it have to be 100% on board. But it's really important. I, I can emphasize how strongly I feel about that.
Brian, is there any discussion at the superintendent countywide level about this issue? And if so, is that something you could share with the board at sometime in terms of how superintendents in the county are?
Yeah. The largest conversation we've had was about the proposed legislation. We don't dive into much of those details because I think our tech directors tend to spend more of their time having those conversations.
Okay, so they may, yeah, but, I mean, from an administrator or from a superintendent, I just wonder if, like, when that didn't pass, was there, like, a few, "We don't have to do it," or maybe we should take some action?
While, while I.
I'm just curious.
While I agree 100% with Nick that it's unfortunate that the state did not come up with something, I do think that the bill had several flaws in it, that there were a lot of advocacy groups who, if that bill would have passed.
Right.
We would have had some burdens placed on us that had a lot of work, time, and financial challenges, the way it was actually written.
They all come with implications.
Yeah. Yeah. Where it wasn't as simple as, "We're going to ban social media in schools." It wasn't that simple.
No, no, yeah. I just, I was just trying to get a sense as to whether, you know, other high schools or elementary schools, I mean, it's obviously going to be different.
Believe it or not, the, the dominant conversation, at least in the last, you know, because I was doing technology for a while, going back maybe eight years, you have a lot of times where those things bubble up and people say, like, there's, there's an incredibly active listserv for all the tech folks in the state, from tech directors all the way down to your IT folks. So you might get, like, let's say, 10 emails a day from the tech list. So it'll bubble up over the last eight years that somebody goes, "Oh, my gosh, what are people doing about this? We're having a big issue with it. What are other folks doing?" And the answer is almost always, "Well, we're doing a lot, but we're not just blocking things." Because if we block things, there are some challenges that come with, "Let's just block everything." Number one, you can't. So once you block everything, folks find another way to get something. You know, and actually, BJ was talking with our leadership team on Friday, because we did our leadership team retreat on Friday after everybody else got out of here. And what BJ was outlining for them was, "We have a system where we know what our students are doing. We can see how things are going, and if an issue pops up, we can audit and look, and there's a trail, and we know what's happening." If we ban everything and they start going other places, we no longer know where they're going or what they're doing. So there are some unintended consequences with just a heavy-handed, "Let's block everything." So I think even in the last eight years, I have not seen that conversation shift in a really meaningful way. It's, gosh, we have a lot of strategies we employ in the classroom, and we do a lot before we get to blocking something. In district, typically what we've done is if we have a student who struggles, we put things in place, and if they continue to struggle, we block for one student. So we do get to the point where we absolutely limit things, but we sort through a couple of other strategies first, instead of just blocking. My, my bet is that maybe about 70% of the state tends to fall in that same bucket. There are places that just block it, but you don't hear from those folks hardly.
Well, I guess I was referring more to cellphone use by students during the day in classes.
You know, I think the.
Is the area that.
The high school, the high school has made a pretty big push in the last two years to limit cellphone use in classrooms, actually. I think more than a lot of other schools have. I think that's a different question than social media use and blocking.
Yeah, yeah. And that was really, but the other part was interesting. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to just chime in for a second. I agree that the social media question versus the cellphone question are really two different issues, because in fact, there are technologies that exist that positively shut down the use of cell phones in schools, period, end of sentence. Now, I will confess, I don't know how much they cost, and it may be that they're insanely expensive and completely out of reach for us, but they do exist. But going to what Ryan said, that question versus the social media question are really two different issues.
Cell phones, you know, I think that becomes a really interesting one, too, because I think if you tell a student they can't use their cellphone, but you give them a laptop, there's still a lot they can do on a laptop. So I think, you know, five years ago, even maybe, 10 years ago, maybe more 10 years ago, if you banned cell phones, you did a lot. Now, if you ban cell phones, kids can still text each other from their laptop, you know? So I think there.
Not like this.
Yeah. But then it looks like you're doing legitimate work now. There's no under the table anymore. It's, "I'm on my laptop," you know?
Well, to, to a certain extent, it's whack-a-mole, right?
Yeah.
You solve one problem and.
Yeah, yep, 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 yep.
And, you know, we can only do what we can do. But it's a lot harder to be surreptitious on a laptop than it is to be surreptitious on a server.
Absolutely.
And I, I think now is the time, like, I think this now, to further the conversation, I think, is to go to policy.
Policy.
Right. So I think that's where, you know, you can have a, a longer conversation about it. And so now we're going to move out of that and go to transact other legal businesses. We've already given me, right, the authority to sign. And then, is there any other, there are no, any other legal business anybody has? No? All right. Agenda building.
July 17th is our next meeting. We had talked about doing data. We should probably bring our five-year facilities plan. Great that there's a meeting on Monday, but we do annually need to bring that to the full board, and then potentially rescheduling the pre-K presentation, if Sarah can make that work. Those would be the things on our schedule.
Does anybody else have anything pressing that they feel like they would need to discuss then?
Notice the personnel, a reminder for June 26th at 6:00.
All right. And then, we do have a need for an executive session. Do you have the wording?
Yeah. So we need a specific finding that premature public knowledge would place the board at a substantial disadvantage to discuss contracts.
Someone make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Only for Will's benefit?
So now.
Are we taking action afterwards? But we still have to do the other vote.
I don't know. That's up to the board.
Yeah.
Sorry, Will.
You get to hang around.
So now we're going into.
You need to vote to go into executive session now.
All right.
Make a motion to go.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Okay. All right. Okay.